Needing to order, please rise with the President of Leach. Mr. Dotson, will you answer me? They have a little call, please.
Yes, Mayor Rowan Henson, speaking on vacation, absent. Council President Harris, absent. Vice President Wren Johnson.
Present.
Counselor Felicia Jones Water.
Present.
Counselor Carlett Brooks. Counselor Nicole Mead.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Toya Monroe.
Absent.
Counselor Leanna Roplau.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, my he's Nichols Finance Director.
Present.
Yolanda Hughes Tax Collector. Representative for our Engineer Goldbeak. Who's up?
Uh, May I use your presence?
Thank you, Mayor. Present. Might invite you to. You have a form?
Thank you. Let's go down to old business. Does anyone have any concern that they can bring to the panel?
I can't hear.
Do you have any items that you would like to bring in reference to new business? I'm sorry, old business. One item I would like to discuss on the last accounts payable. We, I noticed that one of our retired police persons was getting like 370 odd dollars when normally they get 170 dollars. So I just had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Nichols about it and he will be looking into that to see why there is a discrepancy with that. On with new business. Do we have Khalif Alexander, vendor here? He's not here. Thank you. Can we go on to Lime Systems Vendor?
I have a question.
Go ahead. You have the.
With respect to new business. What is this new business Khalif Alexander? I believe that should have been under old business. So what's the new business?
From what, from my understanding, this is his first opportunity to come and speak to council and thus I guess that is why the President of Council put it under new business because none of us have had, have had a chance to speak with him.
But we were, we were asked to vote to hire him at our last legislative meeting. So we're kind of like doing things backwards now?
No, this is how it should be done. He should come here to see us.
Right, so at the last meeting, we were asked to vote to hire him.
That was done incorrectly. So now we're trying to do it the right way. Okay, um, Mr. Bill Swank from Lime Systems Technology.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here and want to extend my thank you to Council President, to the council members as well as the residents of Yaden, the employees, the interested parties, the stakeholders and invited guests. Thank you very much for the time that you've allotted me today. Greatly appreciate it. Little bit about me, my name is Bill Swank. I'm with, um, and I started my career in accounting and finance and then, um, always technology was always tacked on and then cybersecurity became a practice of mine about 12 years ago. We work with the FBI Infeguard Private Public Partnership and have been doing that ever since the beginning of our cybersecurity. Likewise, we also were asked to work with the Secret Service Cyber Fraud Task Force just this year. We're also a Cloud Security Alliance member and then we help businesses and governments go, run through the digital transformation as well as cybersecurity. So some of the clients that we've helped are the City of Philadelphia Sheriff's Office, Maricopa County, Arizona, Ventura County, California and other, other small businesses in the, in this particular area. For the Sheriff's Office of Philadelphia, we did everything from the nuts and bolts all the way up to the cybersecurity and dealing with the, you know, cybersecurity issues around the election. I'm the CEO of Lime Systems, which is a technology transfer, business transformation technology company and then also managing partner of Lime Cyber, which is our cybersecurity division. Instead of a, and our philosophy is instead of a point solution, we're all about taking a holistic approach to what we do. Likewise, um, we're on a mission to protect 1 million people from the, uh, the effects of cybersecurity and in some cases depending on, on what has happened to you, it can be devastating. So before we kind of begin any further, the question is, just a show of hands, right? How many of you have been a victim of any type of cybersecurity threat? Any type of, um, any type of, uh, of identification theft or loss of money from a bank account? Right? Show of hands, right? Lost your data to hackers, right? So there's, you know, and likewise, you know, something happened to you, money was stolen from your bank account, right? Something has happened to you that is, you know, internet based or cybersecurity based, but you know, it's, it's happened, right? So it looks like there's a nice amount of hands that have gone up, right? Kind of in a nutshell and it's, it's, you know, the dangers are kind of here to stay unfortunately. Uh, we look at the, at the numbers, um, so basically look at the numbers, the numbers kind of hit home, right? From CISA and you have, uh, you know, people lose, you know, lost 350 dollars or 21 hours dealing with a cybersecurity issue. 65% of Americans have been affected. Likewise, um, you know, 44% of, uh, you know, there's 44% of millennials are victims of cybercrime. So it's, it, you know, cybercrime and cybersecurity affects all the generations, doesn't affect one generation or another, it affects all Americans in one form or another, right? And so we're, that's one of the things we're here to talk about today. Now getting closer to whom, right? Moving from whom, local governments are actually targets. They're being targeted by cyber criminals because of the fact that there's just so many of them, um, makes it an easy target. Likewise, um, governments tend to store personally identifiable information. They have typically tax records, they have health records, health information, they have a lot of information that cyber criminals like to get. Likewise, cyber criminals are also very good at what they do and they're getting better every day. They operate under, uh, you know, governments operate under initial constraints, um, you know, and so cyber criminals know that their budgets are limited, resources is limited. And then what's called the Internet of Things, which is your phone, for example, has made, has made it much more difficult to even, even track this stuff because it's added level layer complexity that didn't exist before. Local governments, one of the threats local governments face is the threat of ransomware. And so the ransomware is in the, in the graph, you'll see the ransomware, you know, a little bit decreased and that's because of the fact that these days it's not as reported as it used to be. The, but that brings to mind, uh, a community in Beaumont, Texas, which is, you know, a community about 13,000 people and one Friday in August, um, about two o'clock in the morning, they start realizing that their crime computer's not connecting to the Capitol. Curious, the thing they realized is that hackers had encrypted all of their data for them. So from that Friday in August until they could get their act together, which was weeks to restore everything, bring everything back online, um, they didn't have any government at all. No public service, just everything was closed until everything could be brought back online. So it's, it's kind of the effect of ransomware and cybersecurity issues is sobering. Likewise, the, the cost of data breaches actually rising. So, and you know, in the event, there's an issue. So for example, like, you know, another, another thing that comes to mind is Leesport, Pennsylvania, a small community of about 1,200 people out in Berks County. You would think that cyber criminals would leave them alone if they're really small. The reality was that they were targeted, intentionally targeted. All of their tax data was stolen by cyber criminals and published online. The township didn't have enough money to do anything about it and told their citizens, "Good luck with your life. Hopefully you don't have a problem. Don't let us know. Don't talk to us. I don't know what to tell you." Alright, so they didn't do anything to protect their citizens as a result of their inability to keep things secure. Potentially the cost to Yaden of a cybersecurity incident might be in the range, depending on what it is and depending on how it is, you know, might be in the range of, you know, depending on how many records are lost, might be in the range of 1.8 million dollars. Cyber liability insurance may cover that, may not, it all depends. Likewise, the cost of paying ransom is also up. So ransomware is this idea where hackers have taken, have infiltrated your computer system and have done you the favor of making all of your files nonusable. They do you a favor by saying, you know, by posting out a ransom payment, they'll leave it where you're looking for your files or they'll put it printed out on the printer. And, you know, the cyber criminals are smart in that they'll kind of ask for the amount that they think you can pay. So Lake City, Florida, for example, was, uh, given that ransom note. They came in one day, nothing there, ransom notes were printing out in the printer. They elected to pay the 400,000 dollars because they didn't have, they felt they didn't have a choice. But at the end of the day, um, you know, they didn't do what they were supposed to do and that's why they, they didn't have a choice. But that money went to fuel, you know, potential Iran and to fuel more cybercrime. And likewise, passwords are also valued by cyber criminals. So, you know, so there is a current, you know, it's been around for a while, so government procurement sites or government sites are being used to harvest passwords that belong to people using sites, procurement especially. And so, you know, cyber criminals will, will set up a fake, what appears to be a legitimate site, but in reality it's fake. As we kind of were preparing for this, we, we took a look at Yaden Borough and determined that there was a certain set of username and passwords that had been breached, um, by third, the third party stores of that data. So I'm going to give this report to Mr. Dotson so that he has it and can take action on And then hot off the wire, the things that are happening over the last two weeks, right? Lawyers are actually finding ways to hold boards and councils personally responsible. There are currently litigation in, in the works, in, in the courts that are actually working on testing that theory. Every day it gets a little challenging to not protect your data. Laws are changing, laws, lawyers are trying to figure out and, and, you know, cases are moving through the courts and lawyers are actually making a determination as to how to better sue to recover. The, there's a, there's an organization called Evil Corp, which is one of the largest ransomware hacking gangs out of Russia and they're helping to fund the Russian-Ukraine war. That group is well-funded because they're very successful at it and they're getting stronger and more wealthier every day. Likewise, um, there is an American Data and Privacy Protection Act that is winding its way through Congress. It just passed the House or it's, it's on its way to a House vote and it's expected to hit the Senate and it's expected to sign into law. So that's going to help consumers, right? Because it'll be the first large national data protection law, but for governments, it'll, and, and businesses, it'll be yet another wake-up call. And likewise, you know, if you thought that paying ransom was a good idea, Pennsylvania has now made it illegal for state governments and local governments to pay any type of ransom at all. Yet another reason to be prepared. Some of the, the thoughts that we had in terms, as we were putting this together in terms of, uh, city council under, for consideration, right? To be, with regards to cybersecurity and technology, be proactive and not reactive. Be working, you know, really working against a comprehensive three-year technology and cybersecurity plan. Even if you can't, can't afford it, at least you know, right? So that you can kind of say, this is what the plan is, right? You want to really, um, you know, receive, you know, you should be receiving from your technology team, a technology and cybersecurity report quarterly so that you know kind of where everything is, so that you're not, so that you don't have surprises. And then likewise ensure that there's updated cybersecurity policies and procedures, right? To protect the, protect the borough, especially around, um, privacy policy and incident response. Likewise, um, make sure that there's cybersecurity updates in the employee manual so that an employee can't willingly expose the borough's data to hackers or to misuse. Likewise, working against a risk assessment to identify the risks and then understand, um, you know, understanding the current, um, the current written incident response plan. Everything from the role of council to how it works, the testing, the communication and the recovery. And likewise, um, you know, understand if the investment is enough. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
No worries. Your name, Mr. Smith? What's your name?
Uh, Swank.
Swank, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No worries. So I, I'm sitting here and I'm just a little confused. So are you selling something, trying to sell something to the borough or the residents or both? I'm kind of confused. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I was asked to come to speak, um, on cybersecurity and technology, right? So it's just, it's about educate, being educated around what is, what's happening, what's occurring. You know, this may be a new, I don't know if this is a new conversation for you and the residents, but.
No, I've never heard of it. I mean, I heard of cyber hacking and things, but please right here now.
Correct. Right. And so that's what we do is we really work to educate, educate people on the dangers so that you can be aware.
Also, this is an education, uh, educational segment. Oh, okay. It wasn't really agenda. I was so confused.
Okay.
I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Lou Valori in reference to our efficiency study.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Lou Valori. Good evening, council. Thank you for having me here today. Um, a little bit about myself, um, I've been in business for the last eight years or so. I'm a retired detective sergeant from Precipity, New Jersey, Morris County. Uh, I've been in business doing different types of studies along with private investigative work. My company's very diversified in the work that we do. My background also consists of being retired from the military. I did about 28 years in the Army. My background was military police. That was all in the reserves. My educational background is a doctorate in education. My study is in accreditation for law enforcement and, um, you know, my background in law enforcement overall is very diversified and the work that I'm involved with doing now, I take a lot of pride in and I love working with, uh, you know, the government along with the, the stakeholders, the, uh, the folks that live in town. Uh, just recently I had the opportunity to work on the transition team for Sheriff Bilal in obviously Philadelphia, the Sheriff of Philadelphia. I was on that, uh, transition team working with her. I was actually, actually working with Bill there also at the, uh, transition team. Right now, what I would like to do is kind of go over an overview to point out some of the things that I'll be going over on this efficiency study. And then once I'm done going through the list here, what I'll do is take any questions that you may have of me concerning what some of the areas that we're going to be covering. So, um, right now, this is an efficiency study of the police department. What we're looking at is the management and operational issues of the department. We're looking at items such as budgeting, overtime expenses, hiring, training, retention, diversity, equity, inclusion, grants, community relations, table of organization equipment, information technology, cameras and security systems, policies and procedures, external and internal communications, um, making sure that, uh, the department is abiding by the IACP, that's the International Association of Chief of Police, that's nationally accredited, also with KLEA. KLEA is the Chiefs Association for Law Enforcement and Accreditation Standards. We will incorporate as necessary to make sure the department is running professionally within the legal standards and professional standards for the town. We want to ensure the public is being treated fairly and safety and safely. We want to ensure your staff and personnel are working in the correct conditions and environments. Our goal is to save money, improve efficiency and mitigate insurance claim issues. Our team has years of experience in law enforcement, military, municipal and county government, higher education and nonprofit organizational leadership management. Our team is not interested in politics or personalities. We're interested in deep diving into current issues within the department and how you can make things better here. Trust is a key component in any police department. It will, we will ensure or we analyze and accurately reflect the importance of building and enhancing public trust. Our initial interview resulted in 200 questions that were sent, uh, currently to your acting chief of police and we just sent him another 60 questions for review and analysis. We're waiting to get back that information. Um, as we continue to review information that is provided, we're honing in on areas of concerns and improvement. Uh, no police department is perfect, but excellence should be our standard in all activities and interactions. So this is kind of an overview of the things that we're going to be doing, uh, for the, uh, the township and the department. So it's a very detailed process. There's a lot of categories that we're covering, which were already sent to the, uh, the chief of police, the acting chief of police. And then once we get that information back, we analyze it and then what we do is we do follow-up questions in regards to other areas or concerns that we may have. But the whole thing is to make the department as efficient as possible. We want professionalism. We want to make sure that, uh, the public is safe. We want to make sure that the police are safe. We want to make sure that the council and the mayor and the residents have confidence in the police department. So that's why it's such a detailed process and it's very time consuming. So do you have any question concern, council members?
Yes. Are you? Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Valori, can you tell me a little bit about the expertise of your partners?
Yes. Okay. And just, uh, let you know a little bit more about myself. I'm a formal council member. I was a council member for four years. Uh, our, our township budget was about 55 million dollars. I was on the council, um, the Board of Education in my town, which was 155 million dollar budget. Uh, so in regards to my background, I understand how government works and how important it is to count, uh, make sure that everything's accountable for. Uh, some of my partners are township managers, retired captains of police departments, very diverse backgrounds in regards to the folks that work for me on this study.
Now, when I did just a little bit of research, um, on, on your firm, um, I was given the impression it was just three people that you were partners with.
Do you mind if I walk up a little bit?
Sure, sure, sure. So I thought it was you, PC Price of the Valori firm, along with two other individuals. And one of individuals' expertise was in like HVAC, which is a thing of that nature and the other part, their expertise was in something they had absolutely nothing to deal with, police.
I, I don't know where you have gotten that information from. I, I never provided that information. I have specific individuals that have backgrounds in this, uh, working on this particular information. And actually, here's a good example. When I was, had the opportunity and I was honored to work with Sheriff Bilal, um, most of my staff that I'm working with now worked with her on her policies, procedures, her evidence, her, yeah, yes, Sheriff Rochelle Bilal, yeah. My, my allergies are killing me, so I can't hear that cause I'm sorry. So I worked for her from January, uh, once she got sworn in, I was at her sworn in until probably that end of that summer, we worked on that and, you know, she had a lot she had to do to get her house in order in regards to, you know, building up the right staff and, you know, it's, it's basically, it's, it's like almost being an accountant, there's checks and balances. You're, you're going through everything. And, and the biggest thing is too, is that we realize is that, um, you could work so hard on your department or any organization, but the one time something goes bad and they say, "Well, who trained that person a certain way?" And then you go back in the records and there's no records of that person even being trained, the trainer's not trained and then, you know, that officer unfortunately does something that's inappropriate. And I always say, everything that you worked for in the town goes down the tubes.
And I understand that and I appreciate what you're saying right there, but I think I'm more interested and with all due respect, I'm just more interested with respect to the expertise of your firm.
Yes.
I was also, um, given information that you were very instrumental in the selection of the police chief of Philadelphia.
I was, I was what?
You were very instrumental in helping to, uh, find a police chief of Philadelphia. I'm all, Daniel I'm all, that's what we were told.
No, I wasn't involved. I am curious, but I wasn't involved.
Uh, we were told that you were instrumental in that.
Well, just, just recently, I'll give you an example, Bridgewater Police Department, which is. In New Jersey. Yes, in New Jersey, which is probably, um, maybe just shy of 100 officers, large town, uh, probably, um, probably almost 30 square miles, I could be off, um, probably residents 50,000 people. I was involved with the process of the hiring of that chief. Uh, I put together the exam process and also the, uh, the three-panel interview. Uh, actually, he is now retiring and I'll be working on, uh, their next chief of police there also, uh, who they're going to be hiring.
Okay, so I take it you will be working closely with the Civil Service Commission as well?
Well, see, this is where it's a little bit different. Um, in New Jersey, depending on what town you're from, where I came from, Precipity Police Department is civil service. Bridgewater Police Department is chiefs of police. So how they hire, the, the process is a lot different. Everything is by township ordinance and then there's a process involved in the selection process. Yeah, you're civil service. Yes, I thought you meant Bridgewater. Yes, yeah, you're, you're not civil, you are civil service, yes. Yes, where I came from, I was civil service also. And here's what I will say is that, um, I know based on some of the questions that we put out there, um, you probably have like five officers that could retire in the next couple of years. And when you have a 16-man department, it's so important that you start planning now and how you're going to replace that manpower and the standard of, you know, who you're trying to hire to fit your needs. And it's, you know, you want to make sure that you start and that's all part of the process. You want to start now planning like, okay, if you want to try to get folks that live in town, a lot of young kids, you might want to try to get two young students that are in high school. And unfortunately, a lot of young students don't know that, okay, it's very important to do community service. It's very important to obviously have good habits of study. It's very important to obviously have good habits of study. It's very important to have good credit, obviously not get in trouble, you know, get involved with the town. And those are all things, are like outreach things that you could be doing now to try to bring in maybe young men and women.
So we're short now.
Yeah, you're short.
Like I said, we have 16 officers right now.
Yes.
We're short. We're five months short. So what are we doing right now to try to come up to the numbers that we should be?
And if that just all come out in our study, then-
But you said that's going to take a while.
Well, that if you want to get good candidates, there's a process that's involved. And I understand where I was sitting in your seat as an elected official, where our department that is down to 80 people, where it was 120. So Precipity, for example, has to do some major hiring. And then there's a process. You know, if you're using civil service, you don't have to give your test for your town. In New Jersey, you could do lateral transfers that are civil service. So you have to start thinking outside the box of how you could get the best candidates. Just food for thought.
Can you just clear up some confusion for me? Are you here to help train the current police department or are you here for the chief search or are you here to help with the hiring process of new officers? I'm just, it's all seem-
No, it's just-
Seems to be a little muddled for me.
No, it's okay, yes. So basically, we're coming in as a neutral party and actually looking at the department and conducting an efficiency study. So the council, the mayor, the township manager, the taxpayers, because everything that we're putting out there is on public record. So our questions that we're asking, it can be overlooked. So everything that we're asking is basically, we need to know a lot more about the agency. So like right now, I sent in a questionnaire to the chief. What federal, state, town grants have you got for this department? That gives us a better insight of like where you may be getting your funding from, okay? How do you rotate your vehicles, fleet management? A lot of expenses go to vehicles if they're not being used properly. Who's doing the maintenance on them, et cetera? So basically, the efficiency study is from soup to nuts, from crossing guards to equipment to training. And we want to see the documentations because you have that right as elected leader. When you open up the manual, you'll say, oh, wow, I didn't realize that this is a standard. And what happens a lot of time with police work also, there's so many, so many standards of training that has to be conducted. You can't miss them. And sometimes it's hard to manage at times. So that's why, you know, us looking at it and giving suggestions of maybe how they may be more efficient at doing that, and at the same time, it's not going to cause overtime, it's not going to be a burden on the taxpayers. So we're looking at it from a different view. There's different studies are out there. But what's nice about the folks that I'm with, a lot of them also have been elected leaders, and they know that they have to be accountable to the taxpayers. Because when you're not accountable for the taxpayers, it's very easy to spend somebody else's money when it's not yours. So, so it's, it's very easy to do. So we're coming in as neutral. We're going to state all the facts. And then in regards to the chief, we will assist in regards to the search. And then obviously, it's going to be up to, you know, your organization as to who you eventually pick. But we're going to assist in that process.
So I'm gonna, I'm going, before, before we get to your audience, I'm going to ask Councilor Johnson, is it okay for the audience, the residents of Yaden, if they have any questions, to feel free to-
You've noted that. Oh, not really.
Yes, ma'am.
Unfortunately, I have had an idea against video of the young man that- Can you speak, I have noticed, can you speak my word?
Unfortunately, I just had the opportunity to look at the video of the young man that committed suicide. What I noticed is that there are blind spots. And I'm hoping you're going to look into that because those cameras, first of all, there is no sound.
Counselor Johnson. Why? Is there a part of your-
All right, so we'll talk, we'll discuss that. Thank you.
You have a pause before this. How many seconds?
If you're about cameras, that's all.
Please wear your cameras.
Where are you located?
Yes, do you have any further questions?
Where are you located, Mr. Bilari?
Where are you located? About cameras.
I'm asking a question about cameras.
Okay. Yes.
She can ask a question about-
That wasn't out, that's all. This is what you say.
But I would just-
No, this is what you have, you have to answer what you say here, anything.
Okay. Could I just do just one thing? Basically, and it's in some of the questions that already went out to the acting chief of police, we ask questions in regards to everything, what improvements can be done on the department internally, externally. I know that, I was told that, you know, there's cameras that are out in the field in the town. There's so many cameras here in your building, your infrastructure. There's so many cameras that are in the cells. But that's all part of the process that we go through because then we'll find out in regards to like, okay, are we getting funding for, we'll say, talk about cameras, video cameras for the vehicles or body mics, body cameras, you know? So that will all come up and that's all part of like budgeting, that's all part of grants you get, federal, state, and local grants. And these are all questions that we'll ask, obviously, the chief of police. And then if he can't answer the questions, then we'll go to the body of government to ask other questions. But everything that we're asking, I believe that you'll be very happy the way that we're going through this. And it's from like, you know, you take for granted crossing guards. I know we just, I threw it out there. I know up north, there's major problems with crossing guards because a lot of the people just don't show up. And then there goes half your patrol units crossing children and there's a major accident. But that's all part of like that planning of like, well, okay, are you going to do a survey and assessment on that school crossing again? Because maybe all those kids are grown up now, there's no need to be crossed there. So we really look at it. That's why it's so long to process because it's redundancies. And we'll come back and again, we just asked the chief, I have to get those questions back on Friday, 60 other questions. And there'll be another 60 or 100 thrown at them. Because once you start gathering that information, you start turning it. So then we give you, the council, the body of government here, a good product.
Yeah, I'm going to ask a question.
Okay.
Is your office located, is it in North Jersey?
Uh, no, I'm in South Jersey now. I'm only 35 minutes from you guys now. I'm by Mount Laurel. But my business is, I work throughout the whole state though, you know? So it's not like, you know, I have a seat up in the town of Precipity, I share office, but I live physically down in Haynesport. And it's on my website also.
No, I was just asking because I know we play for your friend.
Oh, well.
And we know it's-
No, no, that was taken out of that.
Oh, okay.
It was, yeah. But you can still get, I love your self-introspection because you do, that's why I'm a jury captain, what about pockets? Yes, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Um, Mr. Bilari, you said that you stated you also show if we-
Can you please have a-
I heard you.
So I said, Mr. Bilari, that your study will also show us if we need more officers, 16 officers, that's projected at the pain.
Absolutely.
More arrests.
Yes, and then, and like I said, the information that we provide certainly come up and say, you need seven more vehicles, right? But you know that you don't have the budget. It's up to you, you're the body of government, you make the final decision. We'll give a recommendation based on, hey, listen, this car has 300,000 miles on it, it's not being taken care of. You may want to correct this because you could get lost in that in case, God, somebody ever. So we're not telling you what to do, we're just going to give suggestions based on our experience.
Typically, the number of officers is based on the population.
Was that the name?
The number of officers-
Yes.
Is based on the population.
Yeah, it's based on your population. It's, and it's, at the end of the day, in your ordinance, okay, and I didn't read your ordinance, it could say, no more than 17 officers. But that's legal language. That doesn't mean that you have to have 17 officers. It says no more than 17. You know, it's kind of like that little spin word where, you know, Precipity's at 80, they really should be at 120, you know? So they're 40 short. So they have a lot of catching up to do. They're five short, yes, okay. Yes.
The boys are short. Ma'am, would you stand up, please?
Thank you.
Um, so I have a question for you. Thank you for your information. So first off, I just wanted to get clarification, who is your client? Is your client a whatlet? Is your client an absentee?
Obviously, the town council, the body of government.
Okay, so your contract is paid, we'll get a mark to my, but your client and your loyalty is to the council. Whoever's all the support that you've got, that you've got, that's correct, right?
Like I said in my synopsis there, I'm here with no politics intended.
I understand, I know that, yeah, the questions are going to ask are going to come off as political, but it's just merely a question. So the other thing I just wanted to clarify is, you're not directly requested the policies and procedures that are, are available here in Yaden. And one of them is happening to you before you go.
Okay.
They might leave it, so that's part of your study that's going on here. I was wondering if you could share with the public what your definition of efficiency is.
Efficiency?
Yeah.
Okay, I would say efficiency is that, at the end of the day, we want to make sure that the department is running itself professionally, okay? Professionally to the public, professionally for the, obviously, the body of government. Within law enforcement, there's, there's laws in place. You have to make sure that you abide by the guidelines of your state. So, you know, and I'll give you an example, you don't, you know, you don't want your officer to get in his Morse patrol car and go down the center of town at 100 miles an hour, this is an example, right? But that's, because God forbid he ever hits somebody or injured somebody, he could be charged criminally. And that's all part of your policy procedures of like neglected duty, conduct of becoming. It's all, you know, you abide by standards, just like somebody in the doctor's office. They abide by standards, you know? They just can't distribute medication to somebody unless, you know, there's a prescription involved and there's a script and so on and so forth. So basically, the best thing that probably happened in law enforcement is when KLEA came around back like in the 80s to professionalize the organization. Because at the end of the day, what happens is that if your department is going through strict guidelines, you might not or can afford to go through the accreditation process, it's a very stringent process. But at the end of the day, if your town's being sued and your council members are being asked questions, no, we updated our policies and procedures. We made sure that the vehicles were maintained, they're trained. So you're making sure that you're dotting all your i's and cross all your t's, so you're preventing liabilities to the town, the public, and at the same time, you want to make sure that the public is safe too.
Okay, excuse me, excuse me, I just wanted to ask that you speak with this lady-
Yes.
After this, to try and say-
I get one more, here, sir, sorry. Thank you.
Well, if you have a question, please refer to the public, I guess, if you're here.
We'll have to look into. Okay, you have a question?
Yes. All right. So really quick question. It's just going to be quite simple. In your view, hypothetically, since we started all about that, what would be your recommendations for a department that doesn't be the resties or rights?
Okay, so I'm not going to be judgmentical because I don't know what life of your front line. Hey, just let's go, I have the internal affairs.
This is another question that you could answer.
Yes.
That is, I just, I want, I wish you could understand the level that you're getting involved in with this borough and the communities actually all who are in justice coming in. If you don't mind, please, sir, if you don't mind, we have to after the meeting. Thank you. Okay.
You want me to sit down?
Please, thank you very much.
President's not here, she's on a medical emergency, so her report will be written at a later date. May we have the manager's report?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. On the 22nd of August, the borough manager attended and participated in the backpack giveaway at Evans Elementary School. The event was coordinated by State Representative Joanne Clinton and State Representative Gina Curry. Also in attendance were Chief of Staff Joe Bland, who is the mayor of East Lansdowne, Recreation Director Roy Hunter, Vice President Marin Johnson, and Superintendent Dr. Beakotes of the William Penn School District. It was well-attended and very successful. Again, on the 22nd, the borough manager received a preliminary proposal from the Panoni Engineering Firm in reference to the feasibility study for a community park. The suggested facility would be 2,000 or more, 20,000 square feet. The study will utilize available mapping, including GIS mapping, zoning, parking, typographic conditions surrounding the property usage, and the existing uses within the park. Council members worked, emailed a rough outline of the proposal and its associated costs. The initial cost was $11,800. After massaging the numbers a little bit, our new quote is now $11,000. Tree work on the rear of the Borough Hall parking lot will begin towards the end of September. The borough manager has accepted the resume and application for Ms. Renee Anderson as a temporary front desk receptionist to substitute for Ms. Anita Barnwell, who was out on short-term disability. I will be asking approval to hire as a temporary receptionist at our upcoming legislative meeting. I'm recommending that Michael Pizzullo to be the new superintendent of the Public Works Department. Also, I recommend Mr. Ricardo Maxi for the position of foreman of Public Works Department. We interviewed all Public Works employees except for two, who are currently on probation, but all other members of the department were interviewed for those two positions. I'm also recommending, for council's consideration, the approval at the executive session for the plans for Mr. and Mrs. David Cohen for the development of a four-one-story buildings located at 1100 through 1108 Chester Avenue to encompass both commercial and apartment uses. All relevant information has been forwarded to all council members. Madam Vice President, here ends my report.
I have a question. Question. As Councilor, when did you give all councillors this recommendation for Dave, Mr. and Mrs. David Cohen, while I'm announcing?
Yes, ma'am, I had-
You don't have that.
Yes, ma'am, I asked my assistant, Crystal, to email all councillors last year. I also sent, also included the plans and the recommendation from the Delaware County Plan Commission.
You will have it for us before, just like-
I will have it, if you have a question.
I have a question. So of all with Councilor Beattie, I also did not receive this consideration for this development, that's number one. Number two, the acceptance and resume, of the resume and application from Ms. Renee Anderson, where was this job posted?
The job was not posted, to answer your question specifically, what happened is that fortunately, there were confusions about our permanent employee and certain things happening that are personnel nature. So I had to have someone in that place because I couldn't utilize the services from our personnel persons in the police department and much longer. A recommendation was made for, oh, as a matter of fact, we did interview, I did interview another young lady who was highly qualified, above qualified, but the amount of money that she was requesting was not in our budget. And then left me with Ms. Anderson who I interviewed, it fit into our budget, she is temporary, that's all, obviously.
Ms. Beattie, I appreciate what you just explained there, but my question simply was, where was this job advertised?
As I stated earlier-
And it was not advertised.
As I stated earlier, it was not.
Okay, so if it was not advertised, we're still doing the same thing that we're not supposed to be doing. We're hiring based on who knows who, and that's not fair. It's not fair to the residents of Yaden. All jobs should be posted. All jobs should be posted. I don't understand what is so difficult about that. It's not right for people to pay, who has authority, to hire and retain it. It's not right. And then with respect to not only hiring them, but paying them as well. This woman is a borough, is a borough employee. It should pay for council approval, like the rest of the borough employees. So I don't understand why anyone would think that we can just make up our own rules as we want. And then we wonder why we're in so much trouble now. And my next question is with respect to the, uh, community park, uh, feasibility study. Why are we conducting a feasibility study at community park when we had the feasibility study done at the Swim Club? So now we're looking for another piece of land to, to do this for, for recreation center?
I think, I think.
That we're not going to be able to sustain?
I think.
Who's making up these? Who's making this up?
I think that's a great question as it relates to why a feasibility study for a community park. A feasibility study for a community park allows us to have options. Um, it is not up to myself or council to decide where it will be built. That will be a survey question. But if you look at community park, it is about seventy-eight acre, um, acres of land. Um, we have a situation where we have new picnic tables, picnic tables, uh, barbecue grills, tot lots. So if you look at it in its entirety, we also have a plan which will outline trees, bushes, walking trails, tennis courts. So if you look at that location, it provides us with a different view of what a, a recreation center could look like, where it could look, where it could fit. And then the residents have the opportunity, by way of the survey, to say, yes, I would like to have it at community park, no, or yes, I would like to have it at the Yaden Swim Club, which is five point seven acres. At least our, our residents have options, uh, to look and see where they would like to have a community park.
And I can appreciate that and thank you so much for that. But here we go. We had, we had a conversation, including everyone. All of this would have been written down in a plan. So at, right now, what we're doing, we're just really, really doing things in interval. Oh, we're going to do the feasibility study at the Yaden Swim Club, and then a couple months later, oh, well, let's do it at community park. A couple months later, that's the order of the route. Like, where's the plan?
I think.
We're all over the place.
I.
We're all over the place. And now we're talking about eleven thousand dollars. Maybe we could have got a two-for-one if we would have had it both done at the same time. But that's right, it's other people's money. It's other people's money. And my next question is the backpack giveaway. I'm very happy and I'm appreciative of, uh, State Representative McClinton and Gina Curry, you know, uh, having this giveaway for, for our children here in Yaden. So my next question is, then why are we having a backpack giveaway on a seventeen? Why are we spending money that we really don't have to spend just so we can get out some more book bags? So each child should have two book bags for the year?
Should have a whole pack.
Isn't that, isn't that for Darby?
No, that's for Darby and Yaden.
It's for, what it's for is for the District of One Ninety-One. That's what it's for. So that's Philadelphia, that's all of Joanna's area. It's Philadelphia, it's Darby.
We're part of one name, we're, we're part of one so far.
That's fine, but.
We're part of like, you don't want to make a, make a, make a.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. We, I now have the, uh, financials report, please.
We're waiting for books in their hands for two weeks.
You want to help the kids, give the kids some food so they don't have breakfast at the morning? You want to help the kids, give the kids some, give the kids some books that they can actually bring home and do your homework and be able to look instead of photocopies. Just like.
Don't you do that?
I do that.
I do that.
I do that. About the community, that's, do some, so listeners, give me that report, thank you.
Because you're not.
I do.
Thank you.
I do.
On, on, on Thursday of this week, uh, we're getting together with all of the, the, our, all of our lawyers for the borough. Um, and we're going to have a meeting Thursday, September eighth, at eleven, here at Borough Hall. Um, so any of the councilors that want to be a part of that are invited. So all of, all of that will be executive session material. Um, but we'll be having that meeting on the eighth, and there may be something that can be said in the public for the fifteenth meeting, but.
And you said that was the AM?
So you said that from Yaden?
The eighth.
All of the lawyers are going to get out and take a week and have a meeting?
That's September eighth, eleven o'clock.
Eleven, when did this come about? That's, it's Thursday, when did this come about?
I'm pretty sure that there was, that there was an email sent out that had a body on it, but.
No, I. Why on a weekday when everybody?
I do, I'm maybe.
We tried to do it last week, but most of the lawyers couldn't make it, so we picked the eighth.
I don't even know about this whole pile out that's ready to trade. Okay. I was only for surrender.
Um, it's only for other lawyers.
I was only for the hundred.
Oh, okay.
Okay, tax collector's report, please.
Ms. Hughes, would you like me to bring the microphone to you?
Thank you, Borough Manager. Good evening. The, first, I'd like to report that I did send out a letter to everyone that was listed on the upset sale list, uh, to give them their options and to remind them that, uh, the sale is coming up on the twenty-second of September. The letter also let them know what their options were if they thought this, them being on the sale was an error, as well as what their options are, if they thought they need to make pay arrangements before then. And I gave them the date so that they could do that. I have heard from some of the people who received the letters, and I hope it was beneficial to all those so that they can be reminded of what's going on. With respect to the financial. Sure. With respect to the financial. Okay, yeah. The, um, total amount collected since August the twelfth, the next report starts for August thirteenth, was forty-seven thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars and forty-one cents. And that ends my report.
Can I ask a question?
Are you done?
Yeah, I'd like to ask you a question.
Oh, would I ask a question?
Your turn. For the people who are on this for the upset sale, have they given anybody you have contacted to you or are not able to make arrangements?
Well, when they make arrangements, they make arrangements with the tax claim bureau and media. So I don't know if they follow up with them or not. I only know about the people who contacted me.
Okay, so I guess what my question is, for the people who have not contacted me, do you have a list of those names?
Well, I guess by default, yes, because I, I have the, it's easier to know who did contact me. So those who did contact me, that means everybody else didn't. But people, uh, to make arrangements, they have to contact the tax claim bureau and media, and I left them the phone number in the letter. You may, if it's not past nine o'clock. No, he has. Yeah. Yes, sir. If I remember, if I remember correctly, it was, I think it was a hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten?
Yes.
I haven't reported that it's only thirty-seven.
I'm sorry.
Thirty-seven.
What's that thirty-seven?
That is the actual number. I'm, excuse me, excuse me, I was, excuse me, nobody, this man is, our hair person, she conducts a meeting. I have to, I have to, I have to, I have to write for Mr. Porter. So ma'am, thank you for your answer.
See, yeah, but my information is what came directly from the tax claim bureau in media. And they, they sent me a printout. Uh, you want me to forward it to you?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. And do you, I'm sorry, do you know if that has decreased at all?
Yes.
Like, excuse me, Councilor, excuse me, excuse me. Do you, do you, Councilor, since that time, has that number decreased at all? Since we first saw that, that's the week before.
As far as I know, I know that there were two people who were removed from the upset sale list.
Only two?
That, that I know of, yes.
An upset list will change on a consistent and daily basis. It changes every day. It's when the taxpayer will come out and make arrangements with the county. So the number that we get today, because I'm copying them to sue themselves in the county as well, the number goes down, up, all around, on a consistent basis, depending on the arrangement the taxpayer makes with Delaware County.
Okay, thank you. May I, you done this, Hughes?
I am.
Okay, yeah.
With Delaware County.
Uh, Engineers Report? Thank you, Hughes.
Good evening, um, I'm Megan Serra from Panoni for the Engineers Report. Um, something that's not on this report that actually was announced today was the award of the DCNR grants, um, the PA DCNR grants. Um, Yaden Borough received an award of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for... And that's for improvements to community park. It'll include a walkway, some landscaping. Um, we met back, um, this was submitted in April, up at the beginning of this year. So this will supplement the grant we're currently working on, so there'll be a lot of work. Um, this probably won't, by the time they execute everything, nothing will probably get started until the beginning of next year. Um, so, but this is.
Fantastic, thank you so much.
So, um, other items to cover, so we had talked about the building evaluation report that we completed a few months ago. We have sent our final report to, um, Borough staff, and we will be meeting with the manager and Public Works to review the findings and see if there's any emergency issues that we need to address, um, just to keep maintenance of the building, um, upkeep. We are also working on a Keystone Grant with the library for their windows and doors replacement that is due in October. Um, and we've been going back and forth with them on priorities and what exactly they're, um, coordinating with. Um, we also have been discussing, um, various road repairs, and we are coordinating with the contractor and hoping to have that scheduled the end of October. Um, it is my understanding some additional speed homes were also added to that list as well. Once we finalize all the locations, we will provide a map with the exact limits and locations. Um, there were two sanitary issues that were brought up the last two weeks in working with Public Works. They are at Searle Ave and eight-twenty Yaden Ave. Um, we have a meeting tomorrow with Garjul, um, and Public Works to review these locations and review the scope of work, and we will provide a memo prior to, uh, the legislative meeting with, um, estimated cost for this. Then storm repairs there about a month ago, in discussions with Public Works, there was a variety of storm sewer issues. Um, we went out and, you can see there's seven on your list. Um, we wanted to provide them all at one time because they do vary in cost greatly, but altogether, they can be a lot. So, um, we provided a memo on each of them with some information, estimated cost. Um, if that's something that would need a motion to move forward on each of them at the next meeting, if it's something you would want us to prioritize in discussions with Public Works, um, we can certainly work to do that as well. But all seven of these issues were brought up by Public Works as storm sewer issues. The last update is for McDayton Church. Um, in working with McMahon, they prepared all the permit documentation and have submitted everything to Penn Knot. So at this point, we are waiting for Penn Knot's approval on the design submitted.
Um, Mr. Beattie, do you think there was an issue with Penn Knot's? Can you speak up? There was an issue on Cypress Street and West Cops, and I wondered if, um, Borough Manager was down there. I got a phone call about it, people were moving those great big.
Yeah.
Yeah. Could you please?
Supercharge.
Okay, we'll take a look, I'll talk with Mike too before I leave today and make sure that it's.
They're insisting on going up and down Cypress and, uh, Fern, Rose Street. They're actually moving.
So, I'll speak on that. That sense, I was actually on site. Uh, there's actually three roadblocks along that West Cops Creek Parkway. And it appears that there's not enough, uh, barriers to stop people from actually crossing. So they've been coming across the first two roadblock, and then they get to the Cypress Street roadblock, and they try to either go around it, but if they can't go around it, they've been driving up along the sidewalk, the homeowner's sidewalk, to go up Cypress Street. The ones that actually turn around when all the signs are, um, actually blocking that area, now they're bucking traffic on Fern Street. So I don't know what the contractor is actually doing when they're thinking about blocking the road, but they're not utilizing, um, a sufficient amount of barriers. And it's causing a big problem around there, and it's going to be an accident.
Okay.
Not all right. So, I mean, uh, who's responsible for, at the end of the day of the workday, who's responsible to go out to the work site and just make sure that everything is, is safe and proper barriers are there? Who's responsible for that?
I'm not currently aware of that project, so I'm hoping Mike can answer your question.
I'm going to roll into this question. Um, this road is closed during the evening hours for, um, just local residents. I'm sorry, not local residents. Local residents shouldn't know to get to their homes. The road is being semi-opened up for emergency vehicles, fire trucks, ambulances to get through. If they block the full road, there's a definite hazard for everybody who lives in that neighborhood. They're leaving it open for a reason so that the people with the, with the most knowledge know to get in and out. Other people who want to go there are going to do what they want to do. We can't stop them. Honestly, we can't be there all the time. Um, it's a courteous, um, effort by the contractor to let the road be open.
Right, but.
There's a lot of buts I got to do.
But because of the way the cars are driving and they're bucking traffic, especially Fern Street, this is not the first time that Fern Street had this problem when there's been construction in that area. People are literally speeding up Fern, and cars that's coming down doesn't necessarily see them right away. So that's a problem within itself. Now, the police were called, but unfortunately, because we're short-staffed with police officers, they could not come out. So Yaden's constable was actually out there, you know, directing people to go back the ground because they were actually driving on his sidewalk to pass the barriers.
I understand, we've actually parked a police car down there to deter residents. Doesn't matter. People have driven past me while I'm talking to contractors and we're doing work, and they say they have an appointment, they have someplace to be, but they don't care about my life or the.
Yeah, well, you know, bottom line, if we had sufficient police, we would be able to stop something.
We're endangering everybody who lives on that street for a police officer to show up or an ambulance or a fire truck, so it's, it's a losing battle. And we're doing our best. And Garjul and son leaves that road open for residents to get to their homes. They have to get there. It, it's a courteous, um, effort, but we can't do everything. No.
So when will that area be completed?
It should be completed very, uh, within this week, the construction. Then everything has to settle, and then they'll have to do restoration. So there's, they have to clean up their, um, equipment, and we're going to have to go to Yaden Avenue and Searle Avenue, which is, um, in the Engineers Report, for more work. So it's, it's a big ongoing situation. It should be completed, actually, I have to, I'll meet with them tomorrow and we'll find out exactly when we can move forward in opening up this road. It's been, it's been, um, it's been a hassle for residents. It's been a danger for residents, but there's, there's only so much we can do.
Thank you, sir. Did you finish your report?
I did.
Thank you. This question is for you. Okay. The Mayor, the Director of City Council, um, this is a question for not to be. Director City Council, this is a question for not to be, guys, not to answer tonight, but to think about it. In the borough of Bead, in the driveways, we had a lot of problems and it's starting to get really big. My question is, is it possible that we can get some major discount and help for, from council with the engineers to get those driveways paved? Because we have a lot of senior citizens who can't afford to fill in those problems that are becoming enlarged, becoming severely dangerous. This driveway is, I drove it one tonight and it's like full of water. I didn't know how deep it was. I drive a truck and I went there pretty deep. So, excuse me. I'm talking to the council now. I'm talking to the council. And please, excuse me, allow the lady to speak, please.
You're not supposed to be speaking.
She's speaking.
To the non-residents and have... I'm explaining to her that we are roadblocks, we're trying to get the alleyway around the dress for a couple of years now.
Okay, so, and I said, I'm not expecting you guys to answer that tonight, but if you can give some thought to help the residents out with these problems. Thank you very much. You promised to use... I've been trying to use, okay. Yes. Was or was not some of the COVID relief money to be used for the residents in helping out in that land? I'm sorry. Was or was not some of the COVID relief money? Perhaps it had come in already, but was it not to be used for the purpose of the residents in helping, maybe Mrs. McDonald can get some answers in that frame? This could be, get this.
At council's pleasure, absolutely, there are restrictions. That's how we can do it. One, you have to get a primary person looking at the hall. So we wouldn't be able to give it to someone who's going up on and they run it out. And that's an issue, but yeah, that is a council's pleasure to decide what they would like to do with the hard work.
Well, I understand that we would utilize some of those funds to help assist the residents to get these driveways taken care of. We had about maybe two meetings. And from the last meeting, we were supposed to be coming up with the criteria for eligibility and we had yet to do that to date. And it's been...
Nine months.
Yeah, it's been about nine months or more. So I don't understand why we're dragging our feet on this because it's my understanding of those funds, we have to utilize those funds within a certain timeframe before we lose them.
What's the time?
So...
We have until September 31st of 2024 to use the first of those.
But we don't have to wait, we don't have to drag this. We don't have to drag this.
So the criteria, again, even working with this solicitor, not this solicitor, another solicitor, as you and I, we started this process and did start last year. It started in August 2021.
Right.
We went through that process, recommendations were made to council. Council didn't take action when those recommendations were made. You were on that committee, I was on that committee, and so with some others. But council never did anything. We made the recommendation. I know we were waiting for the criteria to be completed by the solicitor, not Mr. Bob, not the solicitor. And we still haven't gotten the criteria. And I made the recommendation again when it came up again. The county has given money out.
Right.
Don't reinvent the wheel.
Right.
What are the county's...
So what do we need to do at this point?
At this point, we need to have qualifications that the governing body will prove.
When can we get that done? Because I just wanna hear how we're gonna move this forward because being stagnant doesn't work for me. It doesn't work for me.
Mr. Bob, from you and I, I'll talk with Mr. Bob.
Five months. The question is to move it forward and I don't wanna be here another nine months with the same issue. Because the monies are there. The money's there. I don't know why this council is trying to hold on to it, but it should be used for...
Okay. My question is still related to COVID. It is sad, but in an account accepted from general funds and any other funds that it cannot be touched except for the purpose in which it was done.
Is the requirement that those funds are actually meant to be part of our department? It hasn't no separate mechanism?
Thank you. So let's move on. Let's get the qualifications moving right now. Okay, committee reports. No, we need to get that done.
We do, yes, we do.
Good evening, members of council and the public. One update, we have budget, 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 budget. 2023 budget, we are in the beginning stages of that process. Department heads have until September the 16th to submit their request. There will be budget workshop meetings in the evening during the month of October. The preliminary budget will be adopted in November. Another budget workshop for the public and others to comment on will happen in early December with the final adoption at the legislative session in December. The Borough is required on an annual basis to, at a public meeting, present the minimum municipal obligation. The MMO for 2023 has to be read at a public meeting. And for the 2023 year, our MMO for our police pension fund is going to be $561,477 for our Public Works employees. It, I'm sorry, they both say, oh, here's the union. For our Public Works employees, our annual municipal contribution is $39,894. And for our non-represented employees, our annual MMO will be $85,488. So these are budget numbers for the 2023 budget season. We also receive state aid that comes in to offset some of these costs to the Borough. We get them every October. You have 30 days to put that money into your pension fund. That is a requirement, which we do do. But that's the presentation for tonight's MMO. And there is my report.
Mr. Nick also has a question.
Yes.
When are we going to be, why aren't we supposed to be meeting with you in regards to the status of the state of the borough or what we are, you know, with lives? When is that gonna take place?
So in my email, I mentioned that we were going to get the final numbers for the month of August, which would take, usually, the bank statements, some of them came in today. We're waiting for a few more to do our reconciliations. So it is my hope that we can have that meeting next week because we'll have our final...
She got our legislative meeting next week, so when is it next week?
Um, I'm open. So I'll send the email. I don't wanna schedule next week as not a legislative meeting. No, we have a week in between.
Okay. Oh, wait a minute. It's next week, I'm listening? Yes. So...
It is because...
It's the 13th, so we need to, I would like to prepare that.
So I, you know, for me, if we wanted to do it that Thursday at 6 o'clock, that's fine with me.
Okay. It's fine with me. I'm glad to do it the same day, yes.
Okay, I can send it to you.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the meeting.
Uh, community affairs.
Good evening. So the community affairs report today is just a reminder about joining us for the Yaden Borough's Third Annual Community Appreciation Day on Saturday, September 17th, 1 to 7 p.m. at Community Park. Again, this event is a good way for the community to get engaged with Borough employees as well as the elected officials. And we're asking for you guys to come out there. There'd be, you know, it's gonna be fun for the whole family plus food, free school supplies, live DJ, line dancing, moon bouncing. And y'all guys come on out, yeah.
Are you gonna keep any volunteers to come out and help with this?
Yes, please get with me for volunteers. For those who want to do vending, please contact me as well.
Okay, will be a cost for vendors?
So if you're selling non-food items, jewelry, whatever, something like that, it's $25. Okay? With no food item. It's gonna be free.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stokes, ordinances and zoning. I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
My question is, and I understand she's saying community day, but although we want community appreciation day, I wanna get it right. But what I want to know is where are those funds coming from? Is it coming from Recreation Line Item? Or if it is coming from Recreation Line Item, why is the recreation liaison written on doing this? And moreover than that, was there a fundraiser to offset the cost as it was actually after?
So it's budgeted for $5,000. $5,000 is nothing considering, considering this type of event. So we are getting vendors, I'm sorry, we are having sponsors donating some of that money and that will be additional to all the other things we have going on.
I have another question. Will those people that you're saying that's donated, will their names be actually to let us know? Because for Blackland, there was not.
Excellent.
All right, all right. And it will probably equal the $2,000 because there's only $3,000 on Recreation for...
No, there's a line item in the budget that has it in there, the $5,000, I believe. It's 461. Again, the Borough code in the definition, that's just what was typed there. But if you go to the state of Pennsylvania and the Borough code under the finances, it lists the budget codes, we don't set them, the state does. And it tells you everything that can fall within that category, this is something that can fall in that category.
So, my, so... So here's my question. So, we're supposed to be, allegedly, there will be sponsors to donate some of these monies to offset the cost.
No, it's not to offset, it's to add.
Oh, it's to add. So we're asking for donation, now we're asking for donations to add additional monies as opposed to offset in the cost of the $5,000. Because according to some people, $5,000 isn't a lot of money.
It isn't.
It is a lot of money. It's a negative. When you spend $5,000 and you have a negative, you wouldn't know about it. You don't have any money.
Not the borough.
And now you want the borough to go help you. No, you're not the borough.
Just me. That's me, I get it. I tell you all, take this word, this is not a personal, you mean? And three, you think you're personal, I have the business of the borough, okay? Okay. Now, can you watch Mr. Stokes for the ordinances and zoning? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council.
This is a code department report for August 2022. There was two zoning use applications, 1 for 418 Church Lane for a used car lot. It was denied. 303 Chester Avenue, it was a monument business that was approved. That was the business that was there prior. There was no zoning here applications. On our hotspots in the Borough, Warsington Wood Apartment Complex, they was abated due to neglect. Violations and citations were issued and our Public Works Department cut the property and a lien was put against the property owner. 1024 Church Lane, the old Roxborough Bank, which is owned by Frankie Francis. He is in violation of the Borough Ordinance for Resitation and Trans. He has been issued citations in reference to him not maintaining the property. 463 Belly Road, we have an owner that had excessive material in his front yard. He was advised to clear it out, he did not. He was also issued violation notices and citations. Action item, the commercial property at 6250 Baltimore is in a process of being sold and it would be a new owner. Macamie Court Senior Living Facility at 554 South Lansdowne Avenue. When the work is completed, they are in the process of starting to occupy the building with tenants. They are having a grand opening on October 10th, 2022. Fire-related issues, there was one fire on 5813 Holly Road. There was no injuries to the owner or for firefighters. We have close items. The Restorer Appeal Court Hearing occurred immediately on August 26, 2022. We're waiting on the judge's decision. Forest Creek Apartment Complex, 300 North Front Street, had a trash issue that has been corrected. Upcoming items, the Pennsylvania Association of Code Officials Fall Foreign is scheduled for September 22nd and 23rd. Myself and Inspector Campbell will be attending. The manager brought this up, the property owner at 1100 Chester Avenue will be submitting plans to redevelop the area with additional floors and parking. He did drop those plans off today. In the upcoming weeks, there will be a meeting to go over zoning changes. Important issues that were brought up, we still need to appoint a Borough Planning Commission and Zoning Officer. The ordinance changes, the zoning board is still working on changes for zoning updates. And as it was mentioned previously, the rear driveways, we're still trying to get the approval of what we're going to do to fund, to assist the residents. For 2022 property maintenance abatements, the total amount up to August is $21,055.39. Our code department revenue for August is $30,47.23. And that concludes my report and code report. And in reference to the hearing from the restorer, I was just given this from the solicitor. They were given a new... Restorer was given a new zoning board hearing, I'm sorry. Restorer was given a new date reference to the zoning board hearing within 60 days from August 31st, 22. And this was just handed to me. That completes my report with code. Yes.
So Judge Whalen sent the, sent the matter, the appeal back to the zoning board so it will start fresh with a directive that from 60 days from his order, which was August 31st, that the zoning board has to conduct a new hearing and make a decision as to whether or not they can be there or not. So we're starting anew. And this will be something that'll be discussed with Mr. Ewald on Thursday, the 8th, at 11:00.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So the zoning board said no and they now approve the restorers to be there? Does that mean that they will have to shut down?
So...
How does that work?
Whatever happens, whether it's granted or it's denied, I'm assuming that whichever side loses will appeal and then we'll go back to Judge Whalen. And then whoever loses there will go to the Superior Court and it could end up in the Supreme Court. There's a lot of money on the line.
Mr. Bob, one question, if you're able to answer this. Do we have coverage for this?
I don't know if that will be answered.
In short, coverage?
The September 8th meeting, but I'm anticipating that that answer will be coming around that time either or shortly thereafter.
I have a question. So, I'll just quit the store because I have something up.
The same thing. I mean, residents are concerned with the boroughs, there's phenomenal lawsuits against the borough and we've been told all along, I don't worry, you know, where are they? I don't think that that's true. When are we gonna get the real information regarding what is covered, what is not? What is the covered cost if we lose? As a rational person, I would think that with the number of lawsuits that are against us, we're probably not gonna win every single lawsuit. So what's this gonna do to the boroughs? How are we gonna answer for the rest of that?
Those are the, those are the questions that the solicitor's office posed to the attorneys representing us in those matters. So I'm hoping to have those answers on Thursday.
And then you'll eventually be able to give that information also to the residents in addition to that.
We, we have to discuss that Thursday, but I'm, I'm hoping that there is at least something that I can say at the, at the meeting on the 15th that will give you some answers.
Uh, Director Stokes, as per usual, I sent you a couple of emails, um, advising of some shenanigans that went on. We do have an ordinance with respect to hanging clothes on, uh, to dry on bushes and the front porch and things of that nature, right?
Yes, we do.
So what I don't understand is, if I see this stuff, how come no one else sees it? And this is like in broad daylight. I thought we had someone working on Saturdays.
Yes, we have an inspector on Saturday.
Yeah, well, I, I, I don't know what's going on, but I have a picture here with clothes, a lot of clothes hanging on a railing at the front, on the front porch. So I'm just a little taken back by that. Um, also, I've seen some signs, um, being advertised in the borough, again, homes, we buy homes. Now, this is what's really getting me, because it blows my mind completely, because the sign that I'm referring to is literally right across the street from the borough, talking about we buy homes. So the code officers have to come inside the office and leave the office past the sign, and nobody thought about taking it down? Nobody? I sound like a broken record. Every meeting is the same thing. We're not doing our job. Our jobs are not getting done, period. Then I had pictures of, I don't know, maybe it was an event that took place at Yaden Borough, and there's a sign on the bush, just in the bush, with the arrows on top of parking. Then it was a big sign on the front of the borough. I guess the sign go this way for this event. Like, come on, we, we look like trash. We look like trash.
No, I understand what you're saying. There wasn't inspector working on Saturday, and I...
The borough manager dared to walk past the sign. He didn't pull it down. What's happening?
The borough manager did not walk past the sign.
You didn't see it?
I did not see it.
Aren't you managing the...
I'm managing, I did not see it, Mr. Johnson.
Someone, okay.
Yeah, I'm confused by this, and it's absurdly, and I'm speaking as a resident, I'm speaking as a resident, and this is what I see. And I'm paying all these taxes, and I'm getting sued, but if I get sued, that means the residents are getting sued.
Right.
We're getting sued.
Okay.
And we're getting issued, and these suits are probably gonna back with us, and our taxes will wanna go up, and we're gonna go like a federal country.
Hey, that's an assumption. Thank you. Um, Congress, uh, Ms. Johnson.
Um, I didn't hear you say anything about dumpsters. How many dumpsters, uh, was reported in the borough this month?
I don't have that in front of me, but I can give you that information tomorrow.
Okay, there's one on our street that's, that's taken up like three car lengths, and I haven't seen anything posted that said that the borough was...
I will give you that information tomorrow.
And the next question, I gave you a picture, and I told you it looked like I'm looking at Fairlock Park when I look out my window. Now it looks like the, every park that's in Philadelphia and here in the area, because nothing was done. The windows are actually closed with vegetation, that has actually closed the windows. What do we do?
The property across the street from you, is that what you're talking about? It was on our abatement list to be taken care of by Public Works, and then we were notified by a real company that they were managing, taking care of the property.
They are handling the grass. I talked to that young man too. I talked to him too, because I, I came by my bill, when you was handling the grass, and I talked to him. They are there to maintain the grass. They asked me to hook up the door to see if there was a number that I could call, like, I could, I won't do that. I don't mind if...
Well, if this is a real...
Lock you up, right?
If you want somebody to call you, anybody gonna lock you up, right? If this is a real company that's managing a property, or a mortgage company, they aren't supposed to take care of the entire property. So again, when I speak to you tomorrow, in reference to the dumpster limit in the borough, if you can give me that information, if you got it from the company.
I work for the borough, you gotta, you gotta know guys.
I'm asking you a question, if you would like to give me that information, and not...
I don't work for the borough. You have a toll guy in the zone that works to send him out. He often comes out, but he don't get out of his truck, because I'm saying that he'll wave at you, but he don't get out the truck.
Okay, I will take care of it.
Thank you.
Um, and, and I understand that people in the borough can't, you know, afford things and things of that nature, but we have to do something when you actually have the structure of your home collapsing. We cannot just say, oh, they're elderly, they can't afford it. Something has to get done, period. It has to get done.
Yes, sir.
There's a hole, again, and I put this up, and I put this up at our last meeting, where the roof has literally collapsed on my block, and you, you said, well, the elderly person there, first and foremost, they're not elderly, that's first and foremost, second of all, they got about five big trucks parked on the street. So I don't wanna hear we, they can't afford it. We have a code to enforce, we must enforce it, period. Mr. Bob said, if you need his assistance in trying to light a fire under people's butts, so they can abide by the rules and, and the laws and the ordinances of that nature, he is willing to do that.
I understand. I will talk to him in reference to that.
Mr. Bob, can you make sure you two have a conversation, please?
Thank you so much. Uh, Mike, come up, would you please come up?
Mr. Bob was trying to say something. What was he saying?
There, before we start an enforcement plan, I'd like counsel to be more like all on the same page for something like this, because we talked about before, the penalties are somewhere between $1,000 and $10,000. So it has to at least be $1,000. So we can start there, but as long as counsel gives us some direction, and we're not just out there throwing tickets on people randomly, as long as we can keep this dialogue, I, I think it's something that we can...
I want to get out of you, oh, man, you gotta do it, someone's gotta get time.
What we're talking about right now, it's, it's like, it's similar to like a summary offense. It's like, let's say this word we've got, we're, we're basically using the government's enforcement mechanism to, all we have is fines, probation, jail, that's how the government forces things. That's what we're talking about. That's an ugly thing, because we're talking about residents that haven't committed, haven't committed a traditional crime, be, having that enforcement mechanism brought down. So they're already in a, in a struggle, you know, their house is falling, and, and the only way that we can make that right is to essentially charge them with something akin to like disorderly conduct of the higher form. So as long as we're all on the same page about this, I, I, I think it needs to be done, but it's a, it's a difficult conversation to have.
Yeah, it's not a difficult, or a big thing, you know? I mean, I, I've seen programs where the municipality would go in and do what they need to do, and then just put a wing on the property.
And the legal problem.
You're gonna have to move forward with some of these people, because it's never gonna get done.
Right.
Just gonna have to...
I'm thinking we'll get a conversation tomorrow.
So there's two, definitely. Okay, thank you so much. I'll look first.
I'll look first. Good evening, everyone. Um, most of my report has been covered by engineering and... It's been covered by engineering and, um, code department. Uh, our abatements are one, two, three. We have seven abatements that we took care of this month, um, keeping up on the borough. Um, sewer issues, Sarrow Avenue and Yaden Avenue, we're gonna be discussing with Garjul and Panoni tomorrow. Um, all street painting has been completed throughout the borough through, uh, in and out of our schools to keep the people safe. Um, the trees in the Borough Hall, Mr. Dotson had spoke about them, they're gonna be scheduled for this month or early next month to be removed. Yaden Swim Club was a big one this month, uh, has been cleared of all debris, trash, overgrown, um, bushes, um, it's been opened up and actually made to look safe and inviting, so it's, um, it's been a long time coming, it's been cleaned and, and looking right. And the Public Works Department, my crew, just absolutely did a fantastic job. Standard maintenance on all our borough vehicles, police vehicles, code vehicles, um, has been maintained throughout the months. Uh, we have had a discussion about a rain garden, Gunther Avenue parking lot. Mr. Dotson, uh, Jamie Andrews, and myself have been discussing and doing some plans on this. I'm not sure if it's gonna happen this year for time constraints, but we're working on designs for it, and it's in the works, and it will happen sooner than later. If not this fall, it will happen in the spring. And that is all. Any, any questions from anybody? Of course. Oh, I'm sorry. Recycling will be, not be picked up tomorrow because of the holiday schedule. All trash will be picked up this week, um, for the four days and not recycled. Yes, all trash will be picked up. We are a little behind on trash, um, from last week's schedule for twice a week, ending in the middle of the week, but we should be fine by, uh, by Friday, everybody should be happy and, uh... Okay. E-Waste. So our E-Waste and our Yard Waste Drop Off will be as scheduled, 9:30, 22, at 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM is E-Waste, and 9:09, from 8:00 to 3:30 will be Yard Waste. I'm sorry, did I say that wrong? No corrections? Okay. Uh, twice a week trash pickup is over as of last week. Yes, it, it did end last week. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I got you. It did, it did. Okay, yes. Yard waste is trees, debris, anything you wanna bring to the borough on every... Hold on.
Yard waste.
Be careful. One garden, one...
Any yard waste you can bring. If you get it in your truck, in your vehicle, bring it to us, yes, we'll pick it up.
Vehicle.
Absolutely.
Logs?
Everything.
Tree trunks of this?
Yes, if it's four, if it's four feet in diameter, it can fit in the back of your mini van, absolutely.
Okay.
My hand's loading.
Now you're pushing me. But yes, any garbage you have, that you can bring over to the borough, and we do this at least nine months out of the year, and two weeks out of the year, we'll actually go out, we got to play lawn, pick up ourselves.
Like propane tanks and paint cans and things of that nature be considered? Is that hazardous?
That would be hazardous waste. Um, paint cans, actually, there's a, there's a method to get rid of a paint can, open up the paint can, fill it full of kelly litter, let it dry out. When the paint is a solid and not a liquid, you can throw that out and it'll retract. The propane is a special pickup for, um, Delaware Hamlet. Yes, the, the emergency, uh, the emergency, emergency city's training center has a, they have a drop off twice a year for that, and, um, if you need information on that, email me, and I'll, I'll figure it out.
Yeah, I'm gonna need that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the type of stuff that should be in the newsletter.
Yes. Well, actually, I know it's been in there, and they have been, they have been just wall painting, absolutely.
Mike, I'm sorry, who's she fit? Uh, I have a question. Is it possible for us to have, as residents, a brochure with all the dents and notes and dates and times and seasons and what happens, the beginning of the season and the end of the season, and pretty much speaks that rest of the shit down?
Absolutely. Now, can we, it'd be easier to put our website so everybody can have access to it?
We have some secrets out there, and they might confuse the litter.
Okay.
And we get a big truck, like, in my truck, and, uh, I'm picking it out to the committee control to give out a jersey.
You're my delivery person? You offer, but yes, we could absolutely do that, no problem.
Okay, let me know when, you know where to go.
I agree with you.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Okay, that's me doing a, uh, safety, police department, fourth, fire department, emergency management department.
There is an upcoming meeting at the 911 Center, September 14th, 2022, at 10:30 to 12:30, um, that is being presented by the County Emergency Management Coordinator for all of the municipal emergency management coordinators in the county. So there's a meeting on that day next, and the emergency management department will be attending the Community Day on September 17th at the Community Park. We will have that via, our emergency management vehicle there and brochures and information for the public.
Uh, Mr. Um, Mr. Director Stokes, um, when do we usually get funds from the county, um, for, remember when we were talking at the last meeting, when it, when council completes the training, we get funds from the county?
You talk, you talk about the NEMs training, that, the funding, if Nafis can piggyback in, the, the fellow council members are supposed to have those trainings, so when there are funds available and when the municipality applies for them, um, I don't know, on the decision of how they made, you will be able to get money that is out there for the municipality, if I'm correct, right, my, my sir?
Say, what do you mean is that? Is it a trial?
It, it depends, the county will notify us.
Okay.
It varies. The county will definitely notify the municipalities when the funds are available and the opportunity for us to apply.
And you'll let us know?
Oh, yes.
Um, Mr. Hunter, Recreation, please.
By the way, I just wanna say, Public Works outstanding job with what you did in the Yaden, um, Swim Club. Thank you. Outstanding. You may mark me. Okay.
Good evening. Uh, while we're giving kudos to Public Works, um, we can give them another hand for our, our rain, not only our rain garden, but also our community garden at Community Park. Um, we have some gardeners out there, I see a few gardeners, Liz. Um, it's been fantastic. Uh, the, uh, I guess former Love Garden has turned into a community garden. It's been just amazing. Um, you need to go out and see it, and maybe when you go out to, um, uh, the Community Appreciation Day, drop past the garden, it's almost done, but they've had squash, peppers, uh, cucumbers, strawberries, the sweet potatoes are ready to be harvested. Uh, I think I stole one the other day, uh, but they're pretty big. So I wanna thank Public Works for providing the water, uh, the rain, the, actually, the, uh, the watering holes that we use to, uh, uh, to, uh, work on the garden, but it's been fantastic. We just finished our basketball season, uh, over 300 kids, um, using the Nile Swim Club and Community Park, uh, was fantastic. We finished that in August, and we will be starting our soccer league, uh, starting sometime this month, probably the, the week after Community Appreciation Day. Um, what else do I have? Oh, our veggie program. Uh, we're over our limit with the veggie program. We have about 45 residents. Uh, also, thank you to, uh, Councilwoman Jones Waters, who also has a food giveaway program, uh, that's done once a month. So between the two of the programs, I think we're feeding a number of, yeah, residents in Yaden. We are going to try to have a trip to the, uh, Urban Farms in Newtown Square. Yeah, we're gonna try to have a, uh, a trip to the Urban Farms where we get our vegetables. We want our residents to see where the vegetables are coming from. It's actually the old Camp Garrett, uh, Garrett Williamson Foundation, but we're gonna try to take a trip out of there toward the end of the month. So all, not only, uh, people who are in the gardening program, the vegetable program, but also people who, uh, residents in Yaden, we want you to take a look at that, because we're going to try sometime in the near future to, uh, start our own, uh, Farmer's Market. Because we're going to try sometime in the near future to, uh, start our own, uh, farmer's market.
So we can do that.
Uh, finally, um, we have one more, um, workshop for our, uh, rain barrels, uh, in October. So we're going to put it on the website. Please sign up for it. Now, in order to get a rain barrel and they're on the podium up there. Yeah, that's where the rain barrels are. Yeah. Uh, the last one we had was the large one on your left and the other one was the, uh, the one on the right. But we're going to try to, uh, uh, at least get as many rain barrels out as possible. So please, please, please sign up for the webinar. It'll be a webinar. And it's been pretty good. So we'll put that on the website. And the, uh, giveaway will be at the Yaden Swim Club. So you won't have far to go. Uh, October the thirteenth, which I think is a Thursday. Uh, so we'll have, we'll be giving the rain barrels away. Thirteenth, thirteenth of, um, October, which is a Thursday, um, at the Yaden, uh, Theater Lot. Any questions? Mike? Yeah, we, we, uh, we don't know what it's going to look like, but, uh, we're, we're, that's in the discussion and also, uh, uh, Veterans Day. Yeah, yeah, I knew you were going to say that. Yeah, Veterans Day is in the, in the offing too. We just need to decide are we going to have a full-fledged program or are we going to do the lunches? Um, Panera Bread gave us free lunches, the cat, the past three years. So I think they'll do that. Um, but yeah, but we're, we're definitely going to have something for Halloween and for Veterans Day.
At this point, just one more thing.
You reminded me about the hat. Pinewood, yes, Pinewood. Uh, just quickly, school starts tomorrow, uh, in case, you don't know, you'll see people wandering all over the place. And also the Pinewood football games, which have been on Friday night, have now been moved to Saturday afternoon at two-thirty. So if you see traffic wandering through Yaden on Saturday afternoon, they're headed up to Kerr Field, um, for the football games. Also, and also in addition, they have started, the district has started to dig holes at Kerr Field for the new athletic facility. Um, remember the school district came here, oh God, Mark? Yeah, to talk about, but they're going to redo Kerr Field with an eight-lane track and football field will start to look like Lower Marion, I guess. But, uh, they're going to start, they're going to do that. So those things are coming up.
Okay, at this time, we are going to do citizens forum. It is agenda items only. It is agenda items only. And you are not going to tell me how to do my job, okay? Now, uh, the comments are limited to three minutes. Michael Trent, come on down.
Uh, first thing, uh, as far as from the reports, as far as the recreation center proposal, I mean, uh, when you're talking about looking at, uh, community park and then it was mentioned in the engineer's report, they're doing improvements there, over a hundred thousand dollars worth. And then you also have the Love Garden. I'm trying to think of if you were going to do something at the rec center. You know, you're, you're actually going over things that are already being done in progress. Plus, the cost of a recreation center, I think would be cost prohibitive, especially with all the lawsuits we're dealing with. Uh, another thing, well, finance, uh, as usual, I don't know when our next meeting will be because we haven't really had one this year. I know you've had a presentation, Nafis, but.
Will there ever be a meeting?
I'm doing my presentation in October.
But I mean, a meeting. Uh, I'm the chair of the community council meeting. Right, and she not here. Uh, does anybody know what the status of the Church Lane project is from PennDOT to try and improve, uh, you know, the accidents and the lights and all that? I know that's something that. What's the project? What's the status? Church Lane and, uh, what's that? A day?
So we are making lots of progress. As I said, last meeting, two neighbors have perfected. Um, they put a balance on their property and they put a wall up on the opposite side of the street. Next year, we will have engineer with Jeff here. Next year, we're spending a million dollars to include the lighting all down the West Cop Street. Um, we gave a lot of, not many blocks to have cars parked on both sides of the street. One-way traffic going west. So those are the things that are happening in that area and throughout the borough. Can you just say?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, one other thing, which I went into last special meeting, uh, when you were talking about, I think this Kalief Alexander trying to be a webmaster. Uh, we just seem to be all up in the air as far as somebody being a webmaster here. Previous one didn't really do a good job. And if I remember hearing right, uh, correctly, uh, Sharon actually mentioned if anybody knew somebody who could do it, they could do it for like twenty-five, thirty dollars an hour, a few days a week, which to me seems a big difference from what they were paying the core consultant. I think he was getting six dollars a month. I know, but I'm just saying he was at the past tense. Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Uh, so I mean, it's still, I don't know if you have anybody in mind for webmaster.
We hired, we have a contract with the webmaster. Chief's already started work. Mr. Court is on longer contract with the borough. They're making progress on the website and our residents can look forward to it.
Hope so. Um, I know on the, was that Thursday, the lawyers won't be meeting, but right now it seems like the legal fees have been exceeding the budget for this year because of all the lawsuits and all the other things regarding lawyers. So hopefully that can be something that can be put under control. Um, and even with the Malory group, uh, I'm not sure which line item, line item in the budget that costs of being associated with.
That would fall in the professional services mine, but we both understand that's a lot. Obviously, that wasn't budgeted.
Right. So in a sense, we're going over budget in quite a few areas at this point. Legal fees, professional services.
So after I have my meeting with council, I plan to present fully to the public.
Okay, but we're still going over budget.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. Next, um, Mayor Johnson, thank you, Mayor Johnson.
Ryan, wait, Prince.
So I have a quick question. Um, uh, Councilor.
Yes.
Quick question. So we are now, um, in the service of April third, no?
Is, um, Councilor.
Okay, and is it safe to say that these two gentlemen worked in the cameras there, her employees?
Yes. Okay.
Um, I said, um, mainly everything I needed to say as the, uh, reports were being given. Howsoever, with, um, um, Mr. Dotson, I would like to know if we can at least get the code reports and all of the other, um, reports from department heads so that we, the residents, can read along with whatever they are saying as well. Thank you. Um, the other thing is, I was on vacation last week. Howsoever, I was privileged to see the video, the unedited video from, um, Wednesday's meeting and there was an executive meeting that was called. All of the councilors went into the executive meeting except for Councilor Waters.
When they, when the, um, executive meeting was over, Councilor Waters won the special privileges to have a sidebar to discuss what was actually going on in executive meeting. Wrong to do, I'm speaking.
You're incorrect.
Wrong to do. The thing that really perturbed me because now she's being rude. Now she's being rude. The thing that really perturbed me is that she got a bad person to have a sidebar with a few of the other councilors, including, uh, the chairperson, turned her back to the community, wiggled her hips a little bit. I thought that that was disgusting. Very nasty, rude and disgusting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson. The speaking is adjourned.
When you pray these, you know, you all have been coming up here for years. You've gone long enough to know. Put your address full. You stipulate what you're talking about. Oh, shut up. She ain't a salt no more. No, you just shut up. You're broken.